So we have everybody?
We do.
Awesome. All right, Tony, if you'd be so kind as to display the flag and we can all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, Tony.
Yep.
All right, Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, invisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right. Welcome, everybody, again to what is appeared to be our last meeting for 2020. Let's hope that 2021 is a better year. So has everybody had an opportunity to look at the manifest?
Yeah, I'm good with them.
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay, anybody want, anybody want to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve the accounts payable manifest of December 28th, 2020, and the payroll manifest for December 29th, 2020.
I'll second.
A motion to second, all in favor, Ivan Bartlett.
Hi, Donna and Dana.
Hi, Tony Dumas.
Hi, Tyler Eaton.
Hi, John Moore.
I was a little confused on the minutes on, the minutes that I see for 12:03 is through the budget?
Yeah, Kelly just made a mistake. That, that shouldn't have come.
Okay, just, just want to make sure we weren't missing another December's minutes. Okay, so has anybody had an opportunity to look at those? 23rd and 14th?
I'm all set.
Yeah, I didn't have any issue with the bar meeting minutes.
Okay. We have a motion.
Make a motion.
Go ahead.
Make a motion to approve the 11:23, 2020 minutes as written.
I'll second it.
Real motion and second, all in favor, Ivan Bartlett.
Hi, Donna and Dana.
Hi, Tony Dumas.
Hi, Tyler Eaton.
Hi, John Moore.
Okay.
Wait, I'm sorry, did you say 11:23 and 12:14?
I just said 11:23. I didn't do the other one there.
I'll make a motion. We approve the minutes of 12:14, 2020.
Second.
Give a motion and a second, all in favor. Ivan Bartlett.
Hi, Donna and Dana.
Hi, Tony Dumas.
Hi, Tyler Eaton.
John Moore.
Okay, that takes care of the manifest and the minutes, reports from signed boards and committees, budget?
Uh, we actually have a couple of meetings coming up. Last meeting that we had, um, I mean, the Budget Committee is happy with us. It's the school budget. They're looking for more discounts and more bringing that level down. So there was conversation in the last meeting too with the school going over a couple of things, but I don't think they're going to get to a 2% increase where like, like what we have, so it's going to be a little contentious at the next meeting still. But we'll see where it turns out, but it's a normal budget, nothing that's, there's only so much they can do with contract agreements and stuff like that that they have, I, you know, with the unions, it's just something that they gotta do. It's just, it's why it's gone up so much. But people don't want to see the 7%.
Yeah, Planning Board?
Uh, Planning Board, no, no meeting until another couple of weeks, I think, but would like just say again, there, there, if anybody's interested, interested in setting on the Planning Board, there's still an opening from one of the guys that had moved out of town.
Interesting, okay. CIP?
CIP, we actually did meet last week, finally, and we didn't have any, any participation from the school. Yeah, but you know, it was scheduled pretty tight, so it's, you know, not, not unexpected that they couldn't make it. But anyway, Chris went over the, all of the CIP information from the town side, you know, going out, what was it, Chris, 10 years?
Six.
Six? Six, yeah, so, um, yeah, the, the, you know, the other members in attendance were pretty impressed with the, you know, the level of detail, the, the graphic timelines, you know, all, all the information Chris had put together. We did a quick review of the school material that we did have. It definitely needs more definition. But I'm going to try to schedule another meeting, trying to get everybody together for this Thursday, although I don't think that's going to happen, so I'll, I'll I'll try to have it set up for next Thursday, if I can pull it off this week.
Okay, great. 300th?
Nothing on the 300.
Right, and there hasn't been any meetings with Marston, right, Donna?
No, they have not.
Okay, Minister Report?
Uh, just a couple of things, um, the COVID, uh, I don't want to call it an outbreak, but the, the COVID activity at the fire department hasn't reached any further than it had a week ago. We're down one, one career firefighter and two members of the call force, officers within the call force. Everybody's okay. Symptomatic, but not too serious, coming back over the next week if they're feeling up to it. Haven't had any other reports of it going beyond those folks as we had last week. We weren't sure what we were going to be dealing with, but so far, just the three of them. And latest reports on all of them are that they're all okay. I know one of them slept all day, but is otherwise okay.
But also, Chris, on that, I mean, one of the things to make sure that people understand on that is that that doesn't leave the town in jeopardy, that because of mutual aid, towns have been covering and helping out each other through all of this, correct?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we've needed additional mutual aid in the past week. It's, it's always kind of hit or miss when, you know, if our ambulance is out and a second call comes in, that automatically goes to mutual aid, but yes, we, all the towns do back each other up and it hasn't affected our service levels yet as far as the chief is concerned. And secondly, we're, as you know, we are mid-transition on the police chief board members. I just want to make sure you got the note on the time change for Lieutenant Woodman swearing in as chief is going to be at nine o'clock on Thursday, earlier than we had originally planned. That's not a public event, but we would like to have a, at least some board presence there. It's a ceremonial thing, but it'd be nice to have that there. It's for her family and it'd be good to have one or two of you there. And everything else will come up later, so that's all I've got for it.
Actually, items review from last meeting?
What were they, Ben?
Well, unfortunately, I don't have it in front of me and I was not attended in the last meeting, so I was.
I didn't have anything listed. I just checked on the last meeting.
Okay.
Hey, Chris, when, can we ask Kelly to just list them out? If there are any action items, have her list them out on the agenda so we don't have to go digging back into the minutes?
Yeah, I think if we, we didn't have any, right? We did some consensus we had there.
Yeah, I believe Lorraine has actually been putting on there, right?
Yeah.
At the bottom of the agenda, not necessarily under the action items, a bulletin point, but she usually puts them at the end of the agenda, but I, again, I don't think there was any that I had listed.
Okay.
Assessing?
Yeah, if I could just give you a walkthrough on, Kelly, Kelly wrote to you about.
Screwdrivers.
You all good there?
Yeah, who's ever packing screwdrivers needs to go on mute, please? Thank you.
Yeah, I just muted him.
So what you have, what you have listed on the agenda and as Kelly wrote to you, everything that's listed on the agenda there is, those are administrative year-ends cleanup items. We, during the revale, Avatar didn't flick a switch before sending out some bills for common, commonly owned parcels like boat ramps and common lands in some subdivisions, so some parcels got bills that, that shouldn't have. And just to clean up the books for year-end, we're asking you to just abate those. There's no actual cost to us. We weren't, we weren't expecting money. There, those values are spread across other properties, so that's the batch that's listed on the agenda. She also sent you a couple of abatement requests that I think both relate to the elderly exemption and ability to pay, not, not contesting the value of properties, but just asking the board for some relief because of inability to pay. That is a, an option in law that it's, it's there on the form. It's just not something you've seen before. As, as we wrote to you in November, we've seen a number of folks that depend on the elderly and disabled exemptions get hit with much bigger tax bills than they're accustomed to coming out of the revale. We don't need decisions on those two that aren't on the agenda, but we do need some guidance from you on how you want to handle them because we've not dealt with those ability to pay kinds of abatement requests before. So if you want to talk offline about that, if you have any thoughts about it now, those are typically things that would be done in non-public when, when you do address them. But we've shown you two expecting more. We've given out more applications and are expecting more to come back between now and the April deadline. So that, just to shine a light on the elderly exemption issue, it's, it's affected probably 50 or so. I, I gave you a list of them with that big report in November, but you're gonna, you're gonna see more of those, so we should talk about how you want to handle them. We don't have to finish it tonight, but we do need to add some structure to it.
Yeah, well, that's what I was going to say, Chris. We do need to be consistent at how we're looking at that. I, I would like to understand kind of like what precedent has been, how the town has handled it in the past. So yeah, I, I think we need more discussion on those.
Yeah, I think you're going to be making it up because we, we haven't seen those before in terms of, you know, what do you want to evaluate and?
With all my years of sitting on the Board of Assessors, let's say that's six years now or whatever that was, after reading these abatements that I know that, whatever, you know, that are there for the, the financial, we've never dealt with it. I've never seen this before for us, you know, how we made a decision on this, so I'm just like the board, it's going to be something new for all of us to talk about.
Yeah, and also, if you, if you want, I, I would encourage you to go back and read that, that document from November. I can resend it to you. If you want to talk about structural change in the elderly exemption, we need to do that in a hurry because that's going to need to go on the warrant. So if that's something you're of a mind to consider, we need, we need to move on that quickly. The, the abatement requests you're going to see this season are going to have to be dealt with because it's the 2020 tax year, but presumably those same folks will come back again next year as well, so.
So, Chris, in a, in a nutshell, I, I did find that document and read it and it, it seemed that like we approve up to a certain amount of value to be eligible for the exemption. Is that the part that we would have to decide to adjust?
Yes, yes, the, it's, I don't think it was a threshold as much as a an amount that is exempted from taxation. Um, the, you, you, you can actually, you can change the thresholds for eligibility, so you know, make fewer people or, or more people eligible for it, and then you can also change the amount that those that do qualify get. And what, what happened in 2020 is with the values going up everywhere in town by 20, 30, 40%, the, the exemption amounts didn't go up along with that because those, those exemption amounts are approved by town meeting.
Right, they're static.
Correct.
Can you find for us the last time it was adjusted?
Uh, yeah, that's in that report as well. I think it was four years ago.
Okay.
So, Chris, there's, there's two issues here that, that we need to think, consider, right? One is like the, the current threshold and whether or not that's the right one, correct? Whether we're, we're at the right spot. And part of, correct me if I'm wrong, but one of the things I'm thinking about is we've got a case here where assessments went up because of where we were, you know, the level of what we were assessed in town, so they went up and that has caused some burden. But conversely, what would happen, and this may never happen, you can tell me that, but what would happen if assessments went down, right? So if we adjusted the threshold now because assessments went up, if assessments went down, would that be something that we would need to look at again to, to adjust, right, based on that? So to me, that's kind of like one issue, and then the second issue is the specific cases that are in front of us. Am I capturing that correctly?
Yes, yeah, the, the structural problem will remain, you know, for these folks. Well, maybe it's, you, you can decide if it's a structural problem or not. It's, it's just a new, it's a new reality for those 50 or 60 taxpayers. And if values were to go down, you could revise those amounts down. You could, you could revise those amounts down for no reason if you wanted to.
Yeah.
You, meaning you propose it to town meeting and town meeting votes on it.
Yeah. Oh, how frequent is it that assessments go down, though?
Uh, well, the, to, the 2008, if, if the revale cycle times right with something like the 2008 financial crisis, when real estate values dropped significantly, you will, you will catch that in value in assessments.
Okay.
But that's, historically speaking, I think that's an outlier.
Yeah, okay. So in terms of discussion, the, the first, the structural issue would be something that would have to be in a public meeting, but then the specific cases in front of us would have to be in a, in a non-public, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So is it incumbent on us to do our homework, have discussions with you while as we need it, and then have a discussion at our next meeting about that? Structural?
Yes, I think you, the, there's not an urgency for those specific cases. You know, those folks want to, want an answer, obviously, but the, the deadline isn't until the end of March or the first of April, so you have plenty of time to deal with the individual cases, but if you want to do something structural, then that's going to involve town meeting, so we should do that at the next meeting if you're so inclined.
So that would mean we want to have a discussion around that at the next meeting, our next meeting?
Yes.
So, Chris, are those, are those particular cases in this list that's on the agenda?
No.
Okay, so these are.
Stuff on the agenda is just the administrative in-house cleanup stuff that I started with.
That, okay, the other, okay.
Yeah, so if you were to, if you were to approve the abatements that we've requested that are printed on the agenda, you won't capture those individual cases. It's just the.
Okay.
So would we say that that's an action item for members of this board to become educated on this topic of where we are with the, kind of like the structure of the, of the abatements and the thresholds and then be able to discuss it at the next meeting?
I would.
Whoever captures the action items, do we get that?
I think that's a Lorraine, Lorraine thing. Did you get it, Lorraine? Did you get that note? Oh, you know what? I don't think she can unmute herself.
We'll catch it. You can, you can move on.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We'll catch.
So assess, you want, hi, it's Lorraine. Do you want me to put assessments?
Elderly exemption topics, I guess, because there's a bunch of, bunch of issues we have to look at.
Got it, thanks. Well, it's not just elderly, though, Tony, right? It's, I forgot what the word.
Disabled is captured in here, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I forgot what the word, wording, how they word it, but it, it's more like hardship, right?
Yeah, yeah, that's.
So it's elderly and hardship.
Yeah, that's fair.
Hey, Chris? It's kind of all foreign language to me when we're talking about all this abatement stuff here, but are these things that would be expected to, to be paid back when the property is sold, or how does that work?
No, this is, this is a, this is a waiver, basically a waiver of taxation, a, it's a redistribution of taxes, so you take, take that amount off the tax bills or the tax assessment of 50 or 60 properties for those that are eligible. And you effectively put that tax burden on the whole town overall, so you're, you're shifting the costs of that. Right now, it's, I think, I'm sorry, I'm frightened, but I think it's $180,000 for a married couple right now. You exempt the first $180,000 of taxable value on their primary residence. And you just kind of take that off the top before you calculate the taxes, so every other parcel in town pays a little bit more in taxes to cover that amount. Same kind of thing happens with the Veterans Tax Credit. It, it comes off the top in a way that is then paid for by the town as a whole. So it is effectively a redistribution of the tax burden.
So when they say that, so when it says disabled, I mean, there's different levels of disability. You know, on the Veterans Tax Break there, it's 100%. Would that still be the criteria set forth for the disability on the, I don't know, how would you say, private sector versus?
Uh, I'm going to go from memory and say I think there's a 50% disability and 100% disability on the, on the, on the exemption. Don't hold me to that, but I think it's, I, I think it's tiered like that, and there's, I believe with the disabled exemption, there's also a a need criteria, as there is with elderly. You, you can only have so much in assets and income to qualify, so not every elderly person in town is eligible for this. You need to be a certain age. You need to have a certain, an income below a certain level and a, an assets below a certain level in order to qualify, and I think the disabled exemption works the same way.
Okay, and hardship would be something new entirely. I think, Donna, you covered that, right?
Well, I, I just used that word for lack of anything else, but I think, Chris, you just said it's, it's need, right?
There are, there, within the, within, usually when you think about abatements, you're thinking about people that don't agree with the level of assessment for their property. They're, they're saying you've, you've assessed me too high and I want you to reduce that assessment and abate my taxes. Within that same process, there is a, a hardship mechanism within the abatement process where the, the taxpayer can say, I don't have the ability to pay this level of taxation. Not necessarily, you know, quibbling with the, the tax assessment, but just that they, they can't afford it. And that's, that is the, that piece of the abatement process is the piece that we have not seen before, and that's, that's going to be new.
So they, so they're two different things. There's hardship, which is part of the abatement, and then there's exemption, which is what we, we think about when we talk about veterans' credits and elderly exemptions, right?
Yes, and it, it just so happens, and, and this is the staff recommending to these people that have elderly exemptions that suddenly got much bigger tax bills, the only avenue for relief that we could envision was this abatement process. And, and that report that I gave you outlines the, the actual tax hit that some of these folks are taking, and you,
Yeah.
and you've read about a couple of them. That's just the only hardship tax relief that we're aware of that is available to us. It just so happens that those folks have been in the, in the elderly or elder and disabled exemption category.
Yeah.
Anything else on assessing?
So, Chris, these, these ones that are listed, those are those small administrative adjustments where like the, the ones like where the assessments went down and we've got to, you know, adjust the abate the taxes by the, those little tiny amounts that, that were listed?
Yes, these are, these are the, they may not all be tiny, but they're all, they're all essentially erroneous. And we, in order to, to correct the financial side of the books, we need, we need to abate those to undo those erroneous tax bills.
Do you need anything tonight from us, Chris?
We, yeah, we'd like a, we'd like a motion to approve the abatements as listed on the agenda.
Yeah, if those are just the administrative ones, I'm, I'm fine with that.
Yes, correct.
Yeah. Uh, do we have to read them off, one, one each?
No, I think if you just refer to them as, as listed or as.
So there's 12 of them, there's 12 of them, all right, Chris?
Okay, all right, I'll make a motion that the Select Board approve the abatements as listed on tonight's agenda.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor, Ivan Bartlett.
Hi, Donna and Dana.
Hi, Tony Dumas.
Hi, John Moore.
You there, Tyler? I don't know if he can unmute himself, hold on.
We have the majority.
You there, Tyler?
I'm here now, yes, okay. I couldn't, I couldn't get there. Hi, Tyler Eaton.
Okay.
That's unanimous.
Motion carries. General Business, the incumbents is. Everybody have a chance to review those?
Yeah.
Looking at the document again to make sure that. Yes, yes, I, yeah, I've already. I'm good with these.
I'm good with them as well. Everybody else?
Yep.
Well, yes, but I think purposes of the folk, folks who, the public, we should probably state what they are.
We want to make a motion and then go to discussion before we vote?
Well, I guess if we make the motion, then we'll, we'll hear it. I mean, I just want to make sure that people understand what we're talking about, right?
Want to give a quick and dirty synopsis, Chris?
Yes, so, uh, incumbencies are commitments that the town has made, contracts that we've entered in 2020 that we won't actually complete the work or spend the money in 2020 for various reasons. And if we encumber these funds, we set them aside from 2020 and will pay for them with 2020 budget dollars when the work is done in 2021, and it's a way to make sure we don't get setback in '21 with things that we had just planned to do in, in '20 or had budgeted to do in 2020. The two that we're asking for this year relate to highway department. One is the top coat of paving we did this fall. Roads that we worked on around Nottingham Lake, we got a base coat down, but it was too late in the season to. Roads that we worked on around Nottingham Lake. We got a base coat down, but it was too late in the season to. Put the top coat on, and we like, we love to get through a freeze thaw cycle with those anyway, so. We have not spent the money, but we are under contract with the paving company to do so. And the other is. Work that is underway, the last step of engineering for the ledge farm project. We have work underway. I think the surveys, actually, the surveyors may have been out last week. Just finishing up drawing one more culvert in that project before we have a full. And complete set of engineered drawings on the ledge farm reconstruction. So we're asking the board to set aside twenty twenty money. We do this at the end of every. Every calendar year typically for things like this, the last meeting of the year.
I can ask a quick question on the engineering designs that we're paying for on this, you know, the ones you just said for ledge farm road. Is there an expiration date for these?
Probably. But I don't know.
Well, you know, obviously, so.
No, that's, that's a fair question. Yeah, I'm sure, you know, when a, when an, when an engineer stamps it and signs it, there must be some convention to. To how long they're good for.
Or like you have septic designs only good for so long. This is only good for so long. I mean, this is a, this engineering design of what we're asking. You know, you'd hate to have to do this process over just because we don't want to spend the million plus dollars to finish the road now. You know, at least we know a deadline when we'd have to say. To maybe put this, if it's ten years from now or five years from now, when we might have to put this in front of the town. Before redoing the whole thing.
That's a fair question. I don't know the answer. I think, what I think in, in all likelihood, you, if it was ten years from now, you'd, you'd hand the, the plans to the engine, a new, an engineer and say, this is what we've got updated for changes and conditions, but. Yeah, I have to get back to you with a better answer than that.
So I mean, this is a common process, process that the select board has kind of like as a tool available to us, right? And again, Chris, correct me if I'm wrong. But I mean, this is one of the, one of the ways that we can help ensure that we're kind of managing the budget and the numbers for next year, right? By, you know, pulling some of these expenses into this year.
Yes, well, if we don't do this, what will happen is that since we're under contract for these costs, we're gonna incur them. And we're gonna have to pay them in twenty one. We would take them out of work. If, if we don't encumber these funds, we'll have to reduce the amount of work we do next year. Because we, we've committed to these. These projects already, and we've, we've signed on them, so. It, it helps, it helps keep the budget in, is steady. And kind of reflects what we intended to do regardless of when the bill actually arrives in the mail. That's fair.
So unless other members of the board have any questions, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Hold on. I gotta unmute Ben. He got muted again somehow. There we go.
Thank you, Tony. I'm good.
Yeah, I'm good with it, too.
Tyler, John? Tyler, John, that sounds like a name from Waltons. The select board, I'll make a motion that the select board encumber twenty, encovers twenty twenty operating budget funds for the following. Highway engineering, CMA engineers, in the amount of nine thousand five hundred dollars. And highway paving with advanced excavation and paving for one hundred and nineteen thousand five hundred and fifty nine dollars.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor. I've been Bartlett.
I, Donna Davis.
I, Tony Dumas.
Hi, Tyler Eaton.
John Moore.
Motion carries. Put the agenda back up. There we go. Okay. Warrant article review. Do we have those? Everybody had an opportunity to look that over?
Yeah.
Any questions, comments?
Yeah, I, I think for the purposes of the people on the phone, we, we're meeting, we need to review what we're discussing.
Can you see it on the screen?
I can see it, Tony.
Walk us through it, please.
Is this the right document, Chris?
Yes. All right, so this is, at, at your last meeting, you. You basically told me to put all these subjects on the warrant. As warrant articles and what, you know, we, we talked a little bit about what you want to see built into the operating budget and what you wanted to see as standalone warrant articles. So this is a list of last year's warrant and this year's list of articles that we've got on our radar at this point. There is nothing new here to you. You've, you've discussed all these topics. The only thing that is new is. In the narrative, there's, you've got to decide how you want to pay for these or propose that, that the town meeting pay for these. So you've got the, just going from top to bottom. The operating budget, highway construction and asphalt maintenance. That's an article last year that you. Asked town meeting to table in the meeting as a. Cost-saving measure and after getting. Set back by that price on ledge farm. So that, that article, that warrant article comes back this year. The highway vehicle capital reserve fund, fire vehicle capital reserve fund is one you also reduced in the town meeting last year. Revaluation, we just went through one, and, and now we've got to start saving for the next one in five years. The, I guess you haven't really talked about the invasive species ETF or the three hundredth.
Quick, quick, before we go, uh, the revaluation.
Yep.
Do we have a final cost of what that actually cost us?
Yeah, I think it's, it's gonna be, it was all contracted. It was around eighty thousand, eighty-one, I think it was. So we, we, we set that aside.
We're gonna be looking at a hundred thousand. We think it's gonna predict us to send a cost in five years to redo another rebound, right?
I think it's gonna be less than that, actually, and you'll, you'll have an opportunity to pull this. Pull this number back a little bit, either each year or in a, in a later year. We're, we're a little bit ahead, so we're, we'll probably end up pulling that number back a little bit. It's gonna be more like eighty thousand, I think. You've, 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 you've got the contract from Avatar that we, we need to discuss and act on at some point, but. I mean, that's, that twenty thousand number, we, I think we're gonna be able to change once you finish with that contract. Is that good, John?
Oh, yeah, that's fine. Thank you. Sorry.
So invasive and three hundredth, we've, we've been at those levels and in, in a groove on those two items for a long time, so you, you haven't discussed them. So I just plugged them in there. You, you can obviously change them if you wish. The purchase of the dump truck at two forty is dependent upon and contingents upon, upon. The highway vehicle deposit of a hundred thousand up above. If, if we, if the voters don't make that deposit, we won't have enough. In the fund to spend the two forty. The lease purchase of the bucket loader, we've presented this as a, as a lease concept. I, in, in the narrative, I suggest that this is one you might want to consider paying for with fund balance. You don't have a good fund balance number yet. I think we'll have something for you at your next meeting, but. Where the lease, the lease purchase would, would turn into a, you know, an interest cost and a. And a, and a lease payment for the next five or six years. I, I thought this was, this was one that might be a good. Fund balance purchase if you felt like you had that kind of room, but that's, that's a discussion and a decision for you all. Renovation of the community center kitchen. This has felt like a priority from, from your discussion, so I flagged that as maybe another one that you could pay for with fund balance. I think there's a political element to this where. You know, voters obviously are, are gonna be more respective to something that doesn't have a, a tax impact, so. You might want to put the things that are most important to you, you know, as, as fund balance items more than, than straight tax items. Repair of roads in South Side Cemetery, conversion of the mezzanine at the fire station. And the E nine one one project, all things we've touched on over the last few meetings. That you had wanted as standalone items. If with, with all of these and those last three in particular. You know, if we, if we don't raise the money through those articles, those projects just don't happen if. You know, we, we can't find other money and spend it on them because the, the voters will have said no, and no means no, so. If, if those. If articles like that don't pass, we'll, it will, we'll have to revisit them again in a future year to get authorization to spend money to do them.
Wait, the ambulance operations, though, I mean, that's just a. That's just something that would be foolish not to pass, right?
And that, that comes from, not from taxes, but from the special revenue fund for ambulance operations that. Insurance payments go into that fund, and we use it to, to, to pay for the ambulance. Itself, so. That number creeps up a little bit every year, but there's no tax impact. That's, that's been there. As long as, probably as long as we've got an ambulance, standard item.
The purpose of the dump truck where it's dependent on a hundred K above, does that end up in? Stupid housekeeping question, but does that warrant article have to be ordered specifically to reference?
Yes, yep, it will, yes, the, the language of the warrant article will say it's contingent on the passage of number X above, whatever that number is. And we could put them in order, you know, just, this is not the order they have to appear in the warrant. You'll, you'll decide that later, but I, I think. The, the logical thing would do would be to, you know, put them one right after the other. And you, you can pass one, but not the other. Also, you could, you could add. The hundred thousand and, and not buy a truck. That would be an option for the voters.
Yes, to say, if, if, if we said that we weren't gonna buy the truck. This year, and we had that hundred K, and that passes, we'd have all the money to buy the truck next year, correct?
Correct.
There's a question in the chat that says, if we get a bucket loader, what is the status of the excavator?
Uh, we already have a bucket loader. It generally lives at the gravel pit. So this is not, this is a replacement. For an existing piece of equipment, not a new, not an addition to the fleet.
All right, so that machine gets traded in or sold off?
Yep, yeah, I, I think we'd probably end up selling it off. I think that was Sean's thinking, but. We're, we're, we're not inclined to own two bucket loaders.
So the second part of that question is, what is the status of the excavator?
It's, it's in use, it's a. I couldn't tell you what it's doing today, but generally it's in use.
Because the excavator is getting old. That's the other question.
No, no, the excavator is, is, is young. It's, it is two years old. You may be thinking of the grader, John.
Oh, sorry, yeah, thank you.
Well, the excavator, I mean, the grader's up there in age, but the motor, I think, has been replaced on it, correct?
A lot of pieces of it have been replaced, but, uh, yes.
So is this, is this? This grader, has it turned into a money pit?
Uh, the, well, we're not, we, we haven't talked about the grader on this, on this list. Maybe you missed that meeting last time, Ben, that.
We just had a comment that were just inquiring in the condition of it.
Oh, okay.
It was about the, it was about the excavator, the condition of the excavator. Right?
I thought it was the grader, but. Go ahead and ask right there.
Grader two, sorry.
Grader two? Is that the, is that the question?
Yeah.
Yeah, the greater, the grader is fifteen years old. And. And aging rapidly. Our, our proposal this year, as we've covered in the operating budget, is to. Is to contract out grading services for. Class five town roads. And try that out in twenty twenty one to see if it works rather than spending a third of a million on a grader. We will continue to use our, the grader we own. For private roads. And hopefully stretch its life out. Longer by. Contract, trying out that contract model. The last thing on the list that we, we, we didn't mention is the stormwater management plan, that grant loan program that was not approved last year at town meeting. We'd like to bring that back. No tax impact, just a. Loan forgiveness program for the. Inventorying of our stormwater assets.
Yeah, I would, on that one, I would suggest revisiting our narrative for that. There's no reason it should have failed last year. I don't think people. Fully understood the benefit it was bringing. You know, balanced against the fact that it. You know, wasn't gonna cost us anything, so.
Yeah, I agree, Tony.
Yeah.
Yeah, so this is everything that you have identified to propose to the voters. And it's up to you where you want to go from here. You know, what do you, you wanna?
Chris, are you looking for a decision tonight on like the lease purchase of the bucket loader and the. Community center kitchen and whether or not we want to use those from fund balancing, looking for that?
No, we don't, we don't need that yet, but I just, I just wanted you to start thinking in those terms. I, I don't think you want to make that decision until you have a clearer picture of. What the fund balance is. And I, I think we'll be able to give you at least a decent estimate, estimate of that at your next meeting. But you may want to shuffle those around. You may want to leave the fund balance alone and just propose these come right out of taxes. Those things are entirely up to you. So this was just to get you thinking about it and find out if there are any questions about. These things before we get to, we, we really need to decide that at the next meeting before we go back to the budget committee, so.
With regards to warrant articles, there's one last question in the chat, and that's about. How will taxpayers be able to vote on amendments to the warrant article at the deliberative session? I mean, it depends on what the format of the deliberative session is, and we don't have that guidance from the moderator yet.
Yeah, you want me to take that, Chris?
Sure.
All right, so right now I am, I am working with Zoom. On our options for a virtual town meeting, and the format it would take is what Zoom calls a webinar, right? So with a webinar, it's basically, you know, you have a limited number of meeting. Participants, meaning those of us that are speaking and presenting, so on and so forth, and. You have a viewing audience of up to X thousand people, right? Whatever that number is. And typically, they license that capability on a per month basis, right? So assuming that we have, we have roughly, what, forty-five hundred-ish registered voters, max? Is that about right?
Yeah.
So we would want to. Get webinar services for up to five thousand participants, because it's like. One thousand, two thousand. Or one thousand, three thousand, five thousand, and so on and so on. The numbers go up from there into the realm of ridiculous, right? But we would want to be able to accommodate five thousand. Participants because that would encompass all of our registered taxpayers. And people who are viewing this webinar as a participant, they have the ability to raise a hand. Submit questions, vote yes or no on things. You know, and, and of course, if that's the route we go, I'm probably gonna want to have a, you know, a dry run webinar where, you know, people can show up and.
Yeah, Tony, Tony, I gotta, I gotta interrupt you there. There's, there's no mechanism in law that allows for voting. by way of Zoom. So if, if we're gonna have a remote meeting, there, if, if we are using the remote meeting method that is allowed by law, uh, there is no mechanism for voters to amend the warrant in the deliberative session.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll just add to that by saying that the, the state has issued some guidance about potential processes for holding remote meetings and drive-through voting and stuff like that. There, there are some options that are out there. We are waiting on the moderator to give us her recommendations on how we handle it. We don't have any information from her yet, and therefore no decisions have been made.
Right.
There, there is, you know, technology out there that can handle portions of it, at least like the presentation portion of it. But there's just, you know, and, and the state kinda keeps updating its recommendation. So we don't have a definitive direction. We have general direction from the state, but nothing concrete from the moderator yet on her recommendation on how to handle it.
Yeah, and, you know, and I'm not, I'm not describing the Zoom option as the be-all, end-all solution, but it, it just, it simply gives us some capabilities, you know, like Chris was saying, to do some of the functions that would be done at the deliberative session. So, so I'm exploring that aspect with Zoom and, but there's still a lot of, you know, unknowns, you know, we don't, we don't even know all the questions yet, I don't think, at this point.
Yeah, I mean, a key, a key component of what the state has issued as guidelines is that you, you don't skip the step of public input, you know, it may not be in person because of the obvious issues, but there is, you know, definite parts of the process and time allowed to make sure, you know, and processes to ensure that people are aware of process, right?
Right.
And so they, they, you know, it's all gonna be done legit and upfront. I can't give you a timeline to these answers because, again, we're waiting on the moderator to distill all the information to confer with the state and to come back to us with her recommendation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And whatever process we come up with, you know, it's gotta, it's gotta fly with state law, and it's gotta be within our ability, right?
Yeah, but, but let's, let's be clear, Tony, we don't own the, we don't own elections, right?
Oh, yeah.
The moderator owns elections, and it's hard to come up with what, you know, the process will be, and we have not heard from the moderator yet.
Right, right. Yeah, she's gotta make some decisions before we can start making.
Implementation, yeah.
Yeah, cuz our, our responsibility in elections is implementation, right?
Right, right.
That's an implementation. So the answer is, yes, we expect that the moderator will request time with us on a future meeting to discuss it.
Fair enough. Hey, Chris, can you refresh my memory in regards to these warrant, warrant articles as, you know, now that we're transitioning to an SB two? If we, do you still put like the board's recommendations and all that stuff on that as well?
Nothing will change because of SB two there.
Okay.
Anything, anything with appropriation will carry the recommendation of, of the select board and the budget committee.
Okay. Ready, and we'll have more an opportunity to discuss this. When's this? It's January eleventh, I think, right?
Yeah, we'll, we'll need to, we'll need to finish, you'll need to finish your work on this before the public hearing at the budget committee. And I can get you that date in a minute. For, yeah, they, their public hearing on, on our budget is the fourteenth, so you will have to finish this by the, if you stick to your regular meeting schedule, by the eleventh of January.
Okay.
Hold on, Tyler. I have to unmute Tyler, hold on. Gotta find him in here. There you go.
Thank you.
Did we lose you, Tyler?
No, I'm here. I just was stuck on mute again, so.
Does anybody have any more questions or comments in regards to the warrant article?
Yeah, I don't. I'm good.
Okay, so we'll, we'll discuss the, the lease purchase and bucket loader and the renovation. I believe that's what you mentioned, Donna, for the next.
Yeah, those are the two that the question is, does it come from the fund balance or not?
Okay. All right. So we have no more questions. I guess we can move on to the next. Root four property.
Okay, so you last discussed this, I think, in November. We had some meetings with potential brokers, and you sent me off to work further with the Norwood Group on perhaps engaging them as brokers for the sale. Had a couple conversations with them, and I, and I just wanna kinda do as much of this discussion as we can in public. Uh, but let's, let's try not to use any numbers in public discussions. You don't want any of your future buyers to know you're thinking about that. So if we can keep our public discussion to process and concepts, and then if you, if you feel like you need to talk numbers, we can go into non-public later. The gist of, of the conversations thus far has, have been really about the, the cell tower. We have talked with them about how to, how to address the cell tower, both in the sale and in the fee, the commission structure. And talked with them, and they brought in one of their cellular experts. And the piece that I, I wanted to relay tonight is that you're, you're gonna have a conversation with Norwood about how you want to move forward with a sale, and the, and the options are pretty much, do you wanna break out the value and sell off the lease on the cell tower separate from the parcel as a whole? We had talked about potentially keeping the cell tower lease as a revenue stream for the town, but decided against that. And that still seems to make sense. That, that prior decision still works. And what you need to have a conversation with, with them about is, do you, do you wanna sell off the, the cell tower lease ahead of time? And then sell the land that, that remains and then be encumbered by that, that lease? Or do you wanna package them together? And the, the rub on that seems to be at this point that if you, if you, if you break them apart, they're probably worth more separately. The, the cell tower lease is pretty valuable and relatively easy to sell. You could, you could sell that lease in sixty to ninety days without a whole lot of effort. And the, the piece of land is obviously gonna be harder to sell, gonna take longer. And it's, it's much less certain. So the upside of splitting them in two is that they may be worth more separately. The downside of splitting them is that you may find that it's harder to sell the land, not only because it's encumbered by that lease on the site, but because it, it loses something that really makes it unique in that, that cell tower revenue stream. So those are the concepts I think you need to hammer through and hear from them rather than hear from me. And we'd like to set up a discussion with you in a non-public session perhaps next week or shortly after the new year to kinda talk through that and, and talk about the numbers involved and what their, what their assessment of the values is together and apart. Obviously, the, you know, the prospect of, of maybe making more is attractive, but the, the prospect of selling off the whole thing faster is also attractive. So that's, that's the framework of the dis, the discussion and the decision that you're gonna need to have with them. I shouldn't play middleman on that. The, and, and that will turn into a discussion about what kind of listing price do you wanna, you wanna talk about? So that's where we are. I just, at the end of today, received a, a proposed brokerage agreement from them, which I will read and then send you in the morning. That would, and we, we need to finalize some things on that. But that's where we are at this point. Also had a conversation with our attorneys about that, those two concepts that, that we have some flexibility there. And in terms of how we go about selling it. I've, I've always been quick to raise flags about the, the bankruptcy and tax dealing limitations, but in talking to Jim Raymond, who was our bankruptcy attorney, we, we have a little bit of flexibility in how we go about this. So that's where we are. I don't have anything that I need from you, but I, I wanted to at least get the discussion that far and, and do that part publicly so that the public knows what you're working on and, and see if you have anything else you wanna set up for a discussion next week. I think that's it.
Chris, the parcel that the cell tower is on, just refresh everybody, especially the, the, the folks that are just attending. How many acres is it that, that the cell towers sits on, on that parcel?
Oh, the tower itself is just a, just a little box. It's fifty by fifty or, or something.
Yeah, but it has a right of way, and it, it, it does cut through a parcel of land, and then that, that, you know, if that was to be sold off separately, what are we talking, that's not included in the whole. It's just three different parcels, correct?
Yes, uh, the, the cell tower lease does not have a specific access road to it. It, we just, as the, we're now the landlords, the town is now the landlord, has to provide access. There's some flexibility in how we do that, so it's not drawn on a map, but it is, it is our responsibility to make sure that the cell tower companies have access. And, you know, presumably you'd work that out with a, with a future buyer. That's on one of the three parcels that is encumbered by that easement.
Right, but do you know the acreage of that one parcel on which the cell tower sits on?
That one is, that's a bigger one. That's probably, that may be seventy acres.
Okay.
That's the westernmost of the three parcels. And, and one of the things that that I got into with Jim Raymond, we, we may have the ability to, to shuffle those lot lines around, which is something that I, I, I was not expecting. So there, there may be opportunities there to, to improve the sale prospects by doing that. If, if we don't wanna leave the lot lines the way they are.
You think that's worth exploring?
I think that's something you should talk to Norwood about, and, you know, they're, they're the experts.
Okay. Any other questions, comments?
I don't have anything.
I don't have anything, Andy.
John, Tyler?
Oh, good.
Okay.
Would you all, would you all be available for a, a call next week? Where you're not scheduled to meet, but where this is gonna be non-public, and you wanna keep it moving. Do you want me to try and make that happen?
Yep. Yeah, yeah, I'm up for that.
Okay. All right, that's all, that's all I had and all I need on that subject, if you don't need anything else.
Okay. So is there anything else that we need to go over here? Let me, I can see part of the agenda here. Did we wanna discuss the, the other, you know, the hardship and all that in non-public? That would we agree to on? Donna?
No, we said we're gonna discuss that at the next meeting, right? Tony, if you wanna unmute.
Yeah.
She has the action items. No, no.
Well, I have the action items for the next meeting as elderly and hardship exemption topics, bucket loader, warrant article, kitchen community center renovation warrant article, and root for property in public.
So the answer, Ben's no.
Okay. Thank you, Lorraine. Okay. If we don't have anything else to discuss, do we have anything for non-public today, or Chris?
I don't know.
Any other board members?
No.
Okay.
This is Steve. I'd like to wish the board and everyone a happy new year.
I'm back at you, Steve.
Thank you, Steve.
Thanks, Steve.
Dave.
Okay, if you don't have anything else, someone like to make a motion? Close the meeting?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Yeah, the motion is second, all in favor, Ivan Barlet.
Hi, Donna, Dennis.
Hi, Tony Dumas.
Hi, Tyler Eaton.
Hi, John Moore.
Thank you. Thank you, Nottingham, and good night.
Take good care.